Good evening and welcome to the Shasberry School Board meeting at 6:30 PM. And we will begin right with citizen comments.
Hi, good evening. Kathy Zemianek. I am a staff here at Shasberry as well as a parent. And I just would like to make just brief comments about the recent discussions that have circulated in this forum. And I'm certainly not here to throw gasoline on the fire, nor am I here to be case-specific at all. There's numerous ethical considerations that I need to comply with, so therefore I will not be talking about the specific case that has been circulating in this forum. So, but however, I would like to comment on process. And I can assure this board, the Shasberry community, and the greater public that safety is a priority here at Shasberry Elementary School. And I, if a child, if a child discloses misconduct, or if somebody associated with that child reports any type of misconduct, we follow local policy and we follow the state law. I have several concerns about the dialogue that's been kind of going on, only because that, with the discussions that have kind of emerged, it can definitely result in some serious consequences and it can be damaging, namely preventing children from coming forward. So, this is an area that I believe we've made every effort as a school district, as a community, and as a state to obtain the necessary information, and not only just everywhere. So, Beth Sosville, who is our very supportive District Director of DCS Services and a valuable resource, has graciously offered her time to this board to do a presentation, training, whatever you want to call it, to the various elements of the subject matter that we're speaking of, which also includes local policy and state law. Knowledge is power. And if you haven't done the training or seen her presentation, I really hope that you accept this offer so we can, so we all be on the same page and we can move forward. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Could you tell us when her presentation is? Sorry?
Absolutely. She, you can arrange it through Jeff or myself. If you want to shoot us some time, she will be more than willing to accommodate to your schedule.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Barry?
Barry, me. Just want to make everybody aware that a group in North Pennington has formed, has formed to try to bring some facts to the fore about Act 46. And in that regard, we've put out some posters and they're going to distribute. I don't know if, I haven't seen any, but I don't, I don't get around to public places very much. So, but this is basically what it says, very short. It says, "What is Act, what is Vermont Act 46? It's a new 2015 education law encouraging school districts to merge, consolidate, reducing the number of school districts and boards in Vermont. By 2017, each school district must create a new plan for governing local education, hopefully increasing efficiency and opportunities for students." So, they're, and they're planning some informal discussions around, in the community. And the first one is going to be Monday, next Monday, August 15th, at Powers Market. Then there's going to be another one on August 22nd at the train station in North Pennington. And the Powers Market one is from 12 to 1:00, and the one at the, at the train station will be from 7 to 8 PM. So, I'm kind of disappointed there aren't more people here, you know, citizens, who would hear this, but hopefully they'll see that.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I do. My name is Mary Babcock, and I'm not sure if anybody knows my name, or you should know my name, because I brought concerns before the board. I don't know who needs signed copies of this. Probably you two do. I am here to effectively, as of today, remove my children from this school. Am I one short?
Thank you, Mary. I need another copy.
I can do.
Is there one more?
I have one, I'm one short, I guess. I just want to read it. I'll give it back to you when I'm done, if you don't mind. Like I said, I am here with this letter to inform you that effective immediately our children are removed from Shasberry School. This is extremely difficult for me to do. So, "The unaddressed bullying that my child has endured for two years is unacceptable. During the school year, our child has continuous stomach aches, headaches, and sore throats that manifest from bullying. Her fear of no one hearing her struggles, helping to end the bullying, and her lack of trust in her teachers and principal at Shasberry Elementary School bring us to our decision. Being told to sit down and disregarding children's concern is disheartening. I began to try to resolve these issues two years ago. A plan was put in place by a professional, and her input was voided and disregarded. When in a meeting, a teacher says, 'I will not change the way that I teach my classroom in the presence of myself and the principal, and having nothing said to stop that conversation is dismaying.' At that moment, I lost faith in this school. How is that meeting my child's needs? It is not in the best interest for any child to be subjected to such closed-minded thinking. When school ended, all signs and symptoms went away, and this is currently. In June, all these symptoms went away. A month before returning to this school, all signs of sickness have returned. Our option is to remove our children from this school and no longer subject her to such bullying. I have listened to many concerns and complaints come before this board, and I am tired of waiting for change to be implemented to better these situations. I am tired of every issue I have brought forward being ignored. Unresolved issues and parent concerns deserve the attention of this board. You are the keepers of this school, and it saddens me that you would not take these matters seriously, as we are the fifth family to remove our children from Shasberry because of similar issues. It saddens me to be at this point, as this is the nearest school that I grew up in. I have so many great memories here and learning experiences, and it infuriates me that this is where I'm at, to ensure that my child can come to school and feel safe, and feel heard, and feel validated, and that she doesn't have to fear somebody bullying her. So, we're done."
Okay. Fran?
I need this board to know that this is my sister, and if there's any discussion, I will have to excuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Do you have any questions? Or do you have any? Because I, I feel that I brought many, many, in two years' time, Fran, that you know very well.
I've had discussions with you.
This board should know of these issues. And it, I don't know, as though you, as the new board members, even have a clue that I was another family that was going through struggles. And that shouldn't be happening. If concerns are coming forward, whether I sit in front of a TV or not, because I haven't. I've come, and I've sat, and I've listened in hopes that something would be done, so I wouldn't be here. But when my daughter, when I watch her walk up the walkway and, and avoid contact, and cringe, coming, you know, getting out of the car, I can't do it. I can't do it. That's my child. And to not know that she's feeling safe, and I know that you say that things, you know, happen, and I know, Jeff, that you say that, you know, you have a connection, it's not good enough. It's not good enough for her to still have headaches, have stomach aches, have sore throats, continually be on guard of what's going to happen next. And I can't do it.
Okay. Well, I have had, uh, talks with other parents, and I've asked them to not do that. I haven't had that discussion with you. I, I feel if people have made their minds up that they want to remove their kids from this school, I've talked to two other people, like I said, and they've decided that that's what they were going to do. So, I'm not going to try to change their mind, because obviously I'm not going to have any effect to that. I'm sorry. I, I think that this school is, I've said before, I'm going to support Jeff, I'm going to support the superintendent. I think things are going to get a lot better, but obviously, no matter what I say, it's, you know, people aren't going to listen.
But I've waited for two years for things to get better.
Okay.
And they haven't. And when you have a minimal amount of things that are not okay, that's where your focus needs to be to, to improve. When you have a climate survey that comes out, and there's lots of good stuff, but the yucky stuff down here doesn't get changed, doesn't feel, you know, doesn't get the attention, there can be simple things to address and put in place that I feel that this board could have a voice in. Are these things getting done? Are these, this is the job of the board, to ensure that parents' concerns get taken care of. And I haven't seen anything. And I, I waited. This is a second grade matter that began. You know, and I have to listen to my nine-year-old. When she goes by, we drive by, and she's, "Wow, this school's looking great. Oh my God, they're doing windows, they're painting, dah 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 dah." All happy, and then the next minute, she's got tears streaming down her face and saying, "Mom, I've been working on the inside." That speaks volumes, from a nine-year-old little girl, wondering during her summer vacation if the inside of her school is getting taken care of too. That's, I need to take care of my family. I need to take care of my daughter. So, that's where my decision is. And like I said, it sickens me. I grew up in this school. I built my house in Shasberry to come to this school. And I don't see, I don't have faith that things are going to turn around if I walked back through these doors with her. It, it really sickens me. And I know we've had conversations, but I know that, I know, Jeff, on your end, you think that you've done what you could for her, and maybe you still feel that you've done everything that you could, but for her to still feel this unsettled and this, this scared coming back into this school, I can't. I can't do it.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry you've made that decision, but...
I can't hold on any longer, Fran. I know you, we've had the conversation, but don't pull them, don't pull them. But no changes happened. Nothing happens.
Okay.
I'd like to comment.
Okay, well, hang on just a second. Any other board member have a comment? Okay.
I'm Noreen Gardner. My son just moved out of this school and is now moving into the seventh grade. I have a grandson that will be entering second grade this year, and another grandson that will be entering kindergarten this year. So, I'm very involved with the school, and I plan to continue to be very involved. Unfortunately, I feel bad that your daughter is having a struggle, your child, Mary. But I think that sometimes society would like the school, or the church, or wherever, to take care of issues that really are beginning in the homes. And so, when, it, it's true. So, when, I'm not saying it's your home. I'm saying you want Jeff and the other staff members to deal with things when children are coming from backgrounds and homes where there is a lot of dysfunction. And so, oftentimes, you know, six hours out of the day, or however long they're here, it's very hard to change the behavior of a child that may be bullying. I grew up in this school, and I actually remember being bullied by someone that was, I could tell you the person, and you would know who it was too. And I didn't want to come to school when I was in fourth or fifth grade either, because that particular person was here. Unfortunately, so, the school wasn't perfect 25, 30, 40, 50 years ago when I attended either. There was bullying then, and there is now. I don't want to minimize that. What I do want to say again is that we're expecting sometimes, I think, the school and the staff to correct issues that are happening in a much broader spectrum. And sometimes miracles can't happen in the six hours, five days a week. So, I feel bad that you feel that way.
And all the...
But I'm completely satisfied.
And all due respect, I probably should have said, you know, make the comments to the board and not get into a conversation with, with Mary, but, okay.
Well, I would like to at least say something.
Okay, yeah, all right.
I will say it to the board. We took my daughter to a professional, and the things that were, were put in place were very simple things that could be done. I witnessed firsthand disregarding what they said to avoid, what they said could help her. I, I'm not going to bring up a situation, Jeff, but you should be aware of this. It was, happened to be a spelling test that was thrown in the garbage. And when I got to the bottom of that matter, it was that the teacher, knowing that bullying was going on, had the bully correct that paper. Those are things that, I'm sorry, are not okay. They should not be happening. When you know that there's a known situation in a classroom, and these children happen to be in the same classroom, you don't then further, as a teacher, expose that vulnerable child to further bullying. Like, those things happen, Nora. It, it was real. It's not my home. I didn't have them or home. But it happens within the school of laws.
I think we're going to get ourselves in trouble, because we're publicly talking about staff members, and I think it's, it's not where I want to go. And I appreciate the letter. If we have any discussions about it, we will ask Holly to recuse herself. I don't know if we're going to do that at this point, but I appreciate you coming for the board. We have the letter, and I'd really rather get off this subject, because I think we're getting in territory we don't want to get to. And no disrespect.
No.
I just, I, I just...
I agree. I don't...
And, and I am, I'm, it's too bad that you pulled your, your, your kids. I don't like seeing that, but you've done it. Okay, I get it. We'll see where this goes, and if there's any discussions, I'll, I'll get to, get back to you. Okay?
All right.
Thank you, Mary.
Fran, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Sort of a general comment?
Yeah.
To address the, at the end of the letter, quoting, "It saddens me that you would not take these matters seriously." These matters, perhaps meaning other situations that have come before us. And I, I think that because it's our, our policy to hear citizen comments without engaging in a conversation about them, we have, you know, we made that decision. That's, that's the way we, we listen to citizen comments. It may appear at times that we are not taking concerns seriously, and I, I just want to say, I think I can speak on behalf of everyone, that we, we take all of these very seriously. So, I'll just leave it at that.
And what else?
I'm, I'm just curious. We have a good school. We've, we've had people come with issues. We've now had five families called, nine children, two will never see. At what point do we as a board discuss what we can do as a board?
Well, we may have that discussion, but I don't know when that's going to happen or how.
I heard Dave.
Yeah.
I don't know if other board members have...
No, I, I think we all have. If there, ever there's been a student issue here at Shasberry, or Mount Anthony, or any of the schools, we take it seriously. We've, I've been here 30 years, and I can tell you, we've had plenty of discussions on families, students, the, the whole nine yards. I mean, it's nothing that we make light of at all. Again, I've, I've had discussions with Mary, I've had discussions with other people. I can't stop them from pulling their students if they so choose. I, you know, maybe we'll have a discussion. This is the first I'm hearing of this tonight, so we'll see where it goes.
I firmly believe this board should have a discussion.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll discuss that at a later date. Anyone else? And thank you, Mary. I don't mean to disrespect you at all, so...
No, I just...
And I, I am concerned, but...
I've been waiting. That's, that's been my concern. I've been waiting for the discussions to happen and the change to, to happen.
Okay.
Because I'm not the only family that has called for bullying.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay. Go with the superintendent's report?
I have a brief report, because I'm actually here to discuss some other things that are on your agenda before I go, so...
Okay.
As you know, the start of school is coming quickly. I think it's, we have, our staff will be returning on August 24th here in their own buildings, and on August 25th, the morning of August 25th, all staff will report to Mount Anthony Union High School. The theme and focus for that morning will be Act 77, which is personal learning plans, and our focus is going to be on art, music, physical education, and foreign language. We have done some professional development with our administrators this summer. Last week, they all attended a presentation by the Vermont Principal Association. We felt that it was a good enough presentation that not only did our principals bill, we'd take all central office administrators. The keynote speaker that day was Kim Marshall. Kim Marshall is a nationally renowned, if not world-renowned educator. His, he publishes a weekly memo, something that I used to subscribe to, and I go, "The principals get it," through the Vermont Principal Association. It's called the Marshall Memo. And he reviews up to 60 educational journals and condenses to relevant points that educators know, and publishes them every, every week electronically. And it, he has quite a following, and he really focused on the principalship and educational leadership, and actually the demands of the principalship. And he focuses on rethinking teacher supervision and evaluation, and it comes down to what, you know, we all know, that quality leadership and quality teachers is really the way that we improve our schools and education. We also did a, a day-long workshop with all our administrators, principals, and central office, with the SVSU legal team, Stitzel and Page came down to, so it was actually Steve Stitzel and Dean Ratwood came down and did a day workshop, really a legal school for administrators, stressing on documentation, investigation, improvement plans, and the process of, the legal process of how it works, and its impact on supervising staff. So, I felt that that was important, so that we get all our administrators on the same page. As I explained to Steve Stitzel, our administrators are ed, myself included, are educators, and we learn, even those, the advanced degrees, advanced educational degrees do not always emphasize supervision to the degree that is necessary to be an effective administrator. So, any resources that we can, including, they were given sample letters, template letters, and there'll be more of that that will follow. So, the other thing that I, I know it's in the principal's report, so I'd like to be here for it, the parking lot update, as we received some information at central office on that today, and the facilities discussion. So, I'm going to yield the rest of my time for that, so then I, as I, you know, I got to leave doing the fencing, but if you could take, whatever you want to take out of order that you think I should be here for.
Well, if you, you want, what you just said, let's do that, if the board doesn't mind while he's here, because he has to go to North Pennington, so, go ahead. You don't want to do the facilities first?
Facilities first.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, I, I've included in the packet for the board to see, we met with Engineering Services of Vermont, a consultant from there, at the ventilation of the school. Fran, you were there?
Yes.
That day. You did a meeting with myself, Jay, Jim Secor, and Fran, and then you did a walkthrough with Jay and Jim. I don't know if you joined in the walkthrough or not, Fran.
No, I didn't. I had to leave.
I didn't either. So, he's, he's the gentleman that wrote the letter about his findings from what, what he sees, which he says is pretty common here in Vermont. When he goes to schools, the CO2 is an issue in almost every old school in the state. And, and actually, he said in the meeting, he said, "You guys are being very proactive compared to what schools have been doing." So, he had, had some recommendations there, what we turned, there was said, "There's no way you're going to get the ventilation done this summer." Even we met back in the spring. He said, "It's just not possible to get the equipment here, to get the process, and just to get everything planned, the money, the specialized equipment for a school. You can't, can't get just generic ventilation equipment." He said, "So, your best bet would be to take the year, get a good proposal together, get a good plan together, have the equipment ready for the beginning of next summer, and then the ventilation project can be done throughout the summer." And he made some recommendations from there, from that point on, saying, you know, get a CO2 monitor. Jay can go around with a portable CO2 monitor, check the rooms on a daily, weekly, whatever basis, track the CO2 in the classrooms and see how it is. We can open up windows if it becomes an issue. We can remove kids from a classroom, let it vent out if we need to, if we need to. And just keep track of it, see what it looks like throughout the year before we get the new ventilation system in. And then once the new ventilation system is in, we can then see with the CO2 monitor what the, what the change has been, and hopefully...
My understanding is the Vermont Department of Public Health agrees with that temporary plan, but has concerns about what our plan will be in the winter months.
Yes.
Which we're going to need to...
Get from...
Get recommendations from this consultant on what we're going to do in winter months, but...
So, yeah, exactly. And I've included in that, with that letter, is a proposal from, from Jim Secor at MSK Engineering about getting the process started, with getting a proposal together and looking at everything that'd be involved. And I, I need a, a board decision on that, if we want him to move forward with that proposal. I think it's not totally more than $4,000, is what he says in the, in the proposal. I put it in the board package, so you guys can have a look at it ahead of time, and then have a discussion. Questions?
So, Jim, for Jim Secor to be the overseer of the RFP process and all that?
Yes.
It's about four grand, estimated.
Yes.
Which is difficult, yeah.
Not more than four. Yeah. And he listed the scope of services there, one through five, anything from investigating to presenting the findings to the school board. So, it's all right there.
Yeah.
Did, did we, I, I was not here at the last meeting. Did we authorize expenditure for Engineering Services of Vermont to come in and prepare this study or to do this walkthrough?
This was recommend, this was a recommendation, once, when we found there was a ventilation problem. They said, "You should get a consultant in here to kind of see what he says," because we didn't know we couldn't get it done this summer.
Yeah.
At that board meeting. So, we, we said, "Let's get somebody in here that knows that and will answer our questions about it," so...
And we, we'll see bill for this?
Actually, it's in, it's in the budget transfer request later on. It's part of that, yeah.
I didn't raise my hand.
Well, I know you're going to say something.
Well, I actually, I asked for, um, to get caught up, because quite frankly, I, this school is known for fixing things. We had a water issue, we had a sewer issue, we had a roof that wasn't planned, and I'm not confident. And I really don't understand where we're at. We've had money come out last week, month, as a budget transfer. We've had money coming out this month. We have this engineer service that's suggesting a year in the, because of the scope of work that you just described, I assume. This looks more like a proposal to, what has been done is, is, I don't have, I, I am not comfortable until I, I see, I, I don't know if it's in the works of the roofing, the public records, until I can be caught up, because the last month, we had 2,900. This month, we have 17. There's 700 within. There's, there's work that needs to be done. The school's going to open. I'm not, I'm not comfortable, because I do not know where we're at, or where we're going, or how much we've spent.
Obviously, the roof is done.
Mm-hmm.
The windows are done. I don't, I didn't go down through, I did stop in three or four times and check the status. The last time I was here, they were doing the sheet rock, the insulation was done and all that stuff, so I would assume there's just taping and, and painting left, and maybe some moldings. So, that stuff is done. I, like I say, I was at that meeting with Secor, and the guy had asked me, as board chair, "How would I want this done? Do you want it done right? Do you want to do temporary?" I said, "I don't want to do temporary. I want it done and done right. I want to do it once." Now, there were, there are some suggestions where you could have temporary, what are those cabinets, Jeff? What are they? They're like 30,000 a room, so I, I really don't think that that's a smart idea to do 30,000 at six or eight rooms, to do that as a temporary fix. And then we're going to have to turn around and do it properly anyway, with the air makeup system or whatever's involved with that. So, I, I chose to, you know, do it the right way once. And so, that's why, and, and he did reiterate that, you know, "We're not going to have this equipment for at least a year." And I said, "Well, then let's do it right the first time," so...
This $4,000 is to get the engineering... This $4,000 is to get the engineering plans for what is needed, put out the RFP. It doesn't commit you to doing the work, but it will get you what different contractors are gonna bid for what needs to be done, and the engineer form that you're hiring tonight with this is the one that will design the project for what, those proposals, to outline those proposals. So this board will have multiple opportunities before then to weigh in on whether they want to move forward on that. But, as I mentioned earlier, you're really not gonna be allowed to do anything, because now you have the Vermont Department of Public Health wanting reports back on what you're doing with the air quality in the building, as concerning CO2. So, and it can be as simple as opening the windows, but obviously, that doesn't work well in months in which you're heating the building, and that's why you're gonna need to put some type of mechanical ventilation system in this building to comply with that. And we don't know what that cost is. You're spending $4,000 to find out what that is going to cost you.
So the state is overseeing us, so they'll be doing checks and balances, the state?
They're gonna, they're gonna want periodic check-ins from us, yeah.
It's like with Jim Tollis, and this gentleman Tollis, the state knows you have a plan, you're implementing the plan.
Yeah.
So it's coming for the plan, then?
They wanna know that we're moving forward with the plan.
And then we'll approve that plan if we want.
I think the first step is getting Jim Secor and his team to get a proposal together, where everything's gonna look like and cost.
Since you suggest that we have the state of Vermont in place, or the state of the, who is involved, who is overseeing this?
I'm a public health. I wouldn't say they're overseeing, we have.
Well, you have to put a report.
We have a letter from them wanting, they wanted us to state what we're doing to address the complaint they received. Same as we also had to do with the Department of Labor, because they received an anonymous complaint about unsafe working conditions in the building, so we also had to address that, and we told them that we were getting this site engineer to come in, an HVAC engineer to come in and review it, they were happy with that, and then they want to know what our status report will be from that.
Can I?
No, go ahead.
With, with the Department of Health, not overseeing, but needing reports, have you reached out for their free service that they, that does all of this, that we don't know where we're at, and don't know where, how much more we have to do?
They do not offer engineering services.
Through the Envision?
The Vermont Department of Public Health?
Mm-hmm.
Not aware of it.
We might want to check. Well, I, go ahead, Dave.
Larry in the back.
Can you just clarify that the, whatever, whatever contact we receive, Jim, from the Department of Public Health?
Yeah.
I'm hearing a couple that they're asking for us to respond, how we responded to a complaint, and not necessarily what we're going to do in terms of remedying a CO2 level that may or may not be due.
I imagine they'll want to know that at some point, but they realize that this isn't going to be remedied overnight. The Department of Labor complaint has been dismissed, because we told them that we are hiring the HVAC consultant to come and give us a report, and then be taking that to the board for action to remedy it. So that complaint was dismissed. The Department of Public Health, if you want to use the term that they'll continue to monitor, because they're basically, in the recent letter, that what this engineer recommends about purchasing a portable monitor, and have the maintenance department here move that monitor, keep track of those reports, open windows, remove students as needed. That's fine for now, but they, their follow-up was, "What are you gonna do for winter?" So that's something we haven't addressed yet.
Okay, and our answer, I mean, I don't think it's likely to be, or should be, our answer, but if our answer were, we are not gonna be able to do anything for winter, what's the response to that?
I think that's, you know, why we would go back to the expert with, you know, it might be buying a portable unit that goes into a classroom, you know, which is really like, well, it's a mechanical air handling system, so it's gonna, it doesn't just, it's not as simple as putting a fan in the window, because we don't want to exhaust heated air, so it's a heat transfer that'll take an air, run it through a double-wall pipe, and then exhaust back out. So it might be that we might, but, you know, we're not the experts, they are, and we would be asking them, now that we have this follow-up letter from the Vermont Department of Health, "How should we be addressing air quality as far as CO2 goes in the winter times?" We don't have that answer, but my guess, it might be that as, in addition to the portable monitor, we might have to buy a portable unit, or rent a portable unit that could go into any room that got a high reading.
So does the RFP, and I don't know that explicitly says this, but are we gonna be asking in the RFP for a, for a short-term and a long-term solution?
I don't believe it's in the RFP, the short-term solution would go back to the consultant that's come in, but that's certainly something we could discuss with MSK if you do contract with them.
When were the Vermont Department of Health, you said you had a follow-up, when was that?
I don't have that in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me, I think it was early this month or late last month.
It was after we got this report.
Yeah, it was well after we got this report.
So what was the date on that report?
This report was June 17th.
So, somewhere in drawing.
That's what.
In an email, I mean, not.
It's just an email check-in.
We, as I said, I asked for the roof folder to be, to answer any questions I may have, but we keep talking about a CO2 issue, this is a school air quality issue. It's, Envision and Act 125 work closely together. Envision has a program with engineers, with the whole scope of it. I'm not comfortable with, with, it doesn't, doesn't look like an evaluation to me, it looks more like a hiring a firm, but we've already gone past that. And it's only my opinion, but I, until I see where we're at, and where we're going, and no, there was a walkthrough, the extent of work, I hear you, I'm just not understanding why it would take a year.
Anybody else? Larry? I didn't want you to think I forgot you.
No, never forget that. Shasbury, Thomas Shasbury, has a long history of taking care of this school. Anything that's ever needed, it got. It got as quick as it could be gotten, okay? Floor was cracked, the roof was planned for, and taken care of when the time came. Septic field failed, we fixed it. Water line failed, we fixed it. Kitchen has a problem, we fixed it. My question is, why haven't we fixed this? And does the reason that we didn't jump on this, this is not something that surprised us, when we were told in advance that this would be a concern? Why have we stayed totally confined to this one company? We could have picked up the phone, and this could have all been behind us. We could have hired other folks to step in and take care of this. Has it basically been put off because of MSK, their recommendations? Is that what you're hanging your hat on?
Wasn't MSK that did the evaluation?
Well, they brought it in, right, Jim? They brought it in under Engineering Services of Vermont?
We asked them to contact somebody for us, for an engineer, so we asked them to do that, but it wasn't because of MSK.
Well, MSK is stepping in to take control of this, correct?
If the board chooses to do that, they, he was asked to do a proposal, he did a proposal.
They haven't brought anybody else forward to recommend, to speed this process up.
From my understanding, from the gentleman, from the ventilation gentleman, he said, "There's no way you're gonna get it done this year."
It's one opinion, Jeff.
He's the expert.
Do you think it's the only company that does this kind of work? That was my question, is MSK the stumbling block here, or?
The board could choose to go.
I believe the board is being proactive to get this corrected, and that's also the opinion of the Vermont Department of Public Health. They applauded us for moving forward with it. And they also pointed out that this is a very common program, problem, in many school buildings in Vermont.
Can you, because I'm curious too, there's no way it can be done this year, meaning this, this construction year, before snow flies, or before temperatures reach a certain point, or what is it that?
It's very detailed, I mean, you're talking about putting a whole new ventilation system within the school.
Ceilings coming down, duct work going in.
And that needs to be done in the summer?
Once students aren't here. Once students aren't here, yeah.
Oil at the close-off sessions of the school.
This gentleman said he did a similar thing, if you remember, a couple summers ago at Highland Hall, when you're driving by Highland Hall, and they had for a few weeks, a lot of duct work coming in, new roof tiles coming in, I think it was quite extensive work, he said, "It's similar to what they probably did." And that's something you get done with, and just saying, "We want to do it this summer."
And what you can do immediately, is you can buy the portable units that Fran referred to, about $30,000 a pump, and put them in all the classrooms, and you would be, you'd correct the problem.
And, and those would, those could be used forever, and they're not temporary?
Could be used forever, you could sell them afterwards, and that's what we're saying, we very well might have to purchase some of those units to deal with it during the winter months.
Are they available, those units available for rent?
Yes, some are, yes. Not, they're not inexpensive to rent, just like you can rent portable air conditioning systems too, but.
Do you know approximately how much they are?
Uh, no, that's what we hope to talk to the engineers about, which.
But we think that this is a project that, if it started the day that kids are out of school, next June, would be completed before we start.
We'd have all the equipment here well ahead of time, ready to go, and he said.
You'd want to award the grant well before that, so equipment could be ordered and be on-site.
He suggested January.
He suggested, yeah. So we're not waiting till next school year, we hope to get the RFP out there as soon as possible and award it January.
Barry?
I understand that this whole thing came up because of a CO2 reading that was too high. Does the Department of Health recommend, or do they recognize, or suggest that there may be other elements in the air that are not quite up to, and that can be measured, or are there other measurements other than CO2?
I don't know that, I don't, Jeff.
I haven't heard from them.
I haven't heard any of that out there.
I'd like to suggest that you ask them.
I would have to think that that would have come up.
I'm sure they have.
A ventilation system isn't only going to remove CO2, it's going, if it's done, it's gonna change the air at a minimum of every two hours.
But what I'm suggesting is, is that if there are other elements in the air besides CO2 that are not good for people to breathe during this interval, that might influence your decision whether or not to buy this.
I think we'd have to test for that with kids in the school with the windows closed. I mean, I think they test for CO2, so again, blood work done, and say, "I had to get tested for this, but don't test me for these other 12 diseases." If you ask for those 12 diseases, they'll test for them. I think they're just looking at CO2 at the time. So I mean, if you're gonna do a formal aldehyde test, I'm sure we could ask for an air quality test and look at, as many factors as one as a board. But we'd have to do that with windows closed, kids in the school.
And we've received no instructions from the Vermont Department of Public Health to do that.
Barry?
On to the roof, Fran.
Yes.
Did MSK sign off on the roof that everything was okay? Do you have somebody that stepped up and?
Yeah, I did, those were emailed to me, and I couldn't print them off, but I'm sure Jeff has them. Yeah, that, they signed off.
So he's taking responsibility?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Now, the question I'm, that I have to ask, we have that proposal before us.
You have it in a blue folder.
Right. And, yeah, everybody has a copy. I'm hearing, I've heard Larry, I've heard Dave, you don't have to approve this proposal if you'd rather get, I don't know, Holly, what do you, Envisions, or whatever this is? Board's pleasure, because if.
I, I am only one, my opinion in this matter is, my one vote. I'm not comfortable, I asked for a folder that would contain probably everything.
Yeah.
To look at, and to educate myself.
What I can do is, I'll get that.
This is a year off, what you're saying is a year off, I don't understand.
Well, I went by what that person said from the state, so, that's why I said that.
I think it was Barry that said something that stuck with me, those CO2s are a measure, and he just repeated again, "Have we?"
Well, you won't be able to do anything until we have kids in the building.
Absolutely.
Windows closed, you're talking middle of December now, before we can test for the things.
December? The school starts in?
You need windows closed, you need all the kids in the school, so, October.
Okay, I guess my question is, if the board doesn't want to go with this proposal, you vote no on it, if you think that there's something else out there, Larry has mentioned it, I think Dave is interested, Holly has brought it up, we can take a vote right now on this thing, and if we need to go back out to somebody else, to have more people out there, I mean, give everybody the opportunity. Dave?
Just to move things ahead, then, I'll move that we, that we award the proposal, the request for the RFP proposal to MSK.
Okay.
But ask that the superintendent just confirm that there is not a free engineering service available through.
From anybody else.
Some state, an agency that.
Before you sign the contract, or before you.
Yeah, that's, I want to get an idea where we're going here.
So.
And Holly's already brought that up, so.
So, again, I'll move that we accept the $4,000, but contingent on the superintendent verifying that there isn't, you know, some free service out there that wouldn't require us spending that for them.
I need a second on that. One second, yeah, okay. Holly?
Until I see what we've done, where we're at.
I can get you that information tomorrow, because I have to go to.
I'm not comfortable voting on something we don't know.
That's okay, that's all right. I know that the roof is done, and I know it's been done properly, I did have the email sent to me on sign-off, so I'm happy with that. I understand your concern, but we could debate this all night about another firm, Larry's right, yeah, maybe we want to check it, that's okay, I get that. But I think with what Dave just offered, I think that's, that's our, that's our out. So if there are other firms, then we can do, we can do so.
But what this looks like, if we vote yes, it looks like we've accepted that this is the route we go.
No, I think that Richard just wrote it down, what Dave has said, the superintendent has heard what was said, so I don't think so. I think we vote to go that way, and we will check other resources. Am I right, or am I wrong? Okay, all right.
So signing this does not move forward?
I don't believe so, no.
And we might end up with three proposals that we're not happy with, and we don't have to.
Right, right. And then we still have this proposal that we can, basically, we're gonna get a proposal. Hold on.
I.
We're gonna be safe, it's okay, I know you.
It's okay, I'm just gonna say, I really wish that you would call the Envision, the Department of Health, and see what there is before we.
Well, we can do that.
That was part of Dave's motion.
Okay.
That was actually the motion.
Then I misunderstanding, but I see us, last month 29, this month 17, 600 within, and 4,000 more. Where are we at?
I think we're gonna be okay, but that's just my opinion. I've said it before, I'm probably the cheapest guy on this board, and I don't want to spend money if we don't have to. But I think we have an issue, it's the CO2 issue. It came up, somebody was proactive before even the board knew this, so that's good. And I think if we move forward, Dave's just made this motion, I think it's a good motion, and I think it keeps us safe that we can do something else. Larry, what do you think?
I think we're late. I think that the main purpose of this board is to keep students and staff safe, number one job. We keep talking about it, here's an instance where we have an air quality issue. We keep talking about it, here's an instance where we have an air quality issue that we've avoided. It doesn't make sense to me. We don't do that here. We take care of things. And I can't understand why we haven't stepped up. We have the money. You people were handed the money because the roofing project came in under budget?
Mm-hmm.
And why you didn't step forward and just say, get somebody in here and make this go away? Either you don't think there's a problem, but you're, you have every indication to believe that there is a problem. No testing has been done to indicate how deep the problem is or how broad the problem is. I just don't understand.
The only thing I disagree with you, Larry, we don't know what it's going to cost. That's, that's the point.
Wait a minute, Fran.
I, I realize about the roof.
In your own meeting, and it was discussed that this project would be somewhere around thirty thousand dollars to take care of this issue. So, it's been discussed.
That is true, but it's, it could be a lot more than that. And I just want to cover our butts, because it could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't know that.
Fran, if it's for the safety of our children.
I, I get you. I do. I feel the same way.
When did we ever draw the line and say, our kids are not worth this?
Well.
I have a question, because it seems to me like at one hand you're saying there should be no dialogue going back and forth. I, I'm confused about how the meeting is running, because it's almost like he's running the meeting and you're not.
Well, no, he, he had, Larry has raised his hand and so I had put him off.
So do you take comments from, when you're in the middle of, and I have a motion on the table, you take comments from the?
Well, we're, we're kind of off citizens' comments.
Is he on the board?
No, he's not, no.
He's just a bystander citizen like me.
Well, I'm trying.
And no, is that the, is that the case?
You're right. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to do, and we're, all the boards are trying to do it now, is do public comments at the beginning and then it's, it's a board meeting for the board in public.
That's not what's been happening.
I, I get that, and that's why I'm, I'm going to try to change that, but I, Larry had raised his hand a couple of times and beforehand and I probably shouldn't do that, so I get myself in trouble.
Right, because that's not how meetings are run. I mean, I'm going to get a book of Robert's Rule of Order and we can all follow that.
Right, no, okay, good. Thank you, Larry. All right, we're, uh, there is a motion on the table. And there's a second, Ed, all in favor of that motion? Okay, four, four, one against.
Correct.
Okay. And that, that doesn't mean that's what we're going to do, but anyway, okay. What is the next, what is the next issue? You have two issues.
Uh, parking lot.
Okay, let's do the parking lot.
So, um, the park lot was planned to be done long before now, but the, um, engineer had a hard time getting to the specs and getting the RFP ready for us in time. I did meet with him last week, uh, to go over some final details and he got a RFP, I believe, over to Central Office today.
Today.
To me, or to the finance office that can go out.
A draft of the RFP.
A draft, a draft, um, for, for finance to look at to go through before, yeah, move forward. So, follow goes well with that, it'll go out soon, go out to bid, we'll get some proposals.
So what will the timeline be on that?
So the timeline we discussed is obviously going to be during school.
Yeah.
And that's going to be part, that's part of the, um, proposal that they put together, is that you're going to do this during school, you're going to do it in sections, so it, it doesn't disrupt the day. Um, and, um, that's just being part, the company who takes it on is going to know that's been.
So they feel it can still happen in the fall?
Yes, yep, yep, yep. Definitely done.
All right, that, that was my question. All right, and did you want to discuss?
Yeah, uh, I, at my, on my chair's report, I have board communication. And what I'd like to do, um, I need more of the communications to go through the chair. So all board members receive copies of whoever's wants requests. Holly's had requests. Uh, I've had some requests, uh, but I think if all board members are receiving copies of whose request we want and why. So, because I'm getting, well, wait a minute, we didn't discuss this and Holly wants this, or Dave wants that, or Fran wants. I think if we're all getting the same request, so we know, we can discuss it. Um, I know Holly's, uh, had the, um, Freedom of Information Act and maybe she feels like she can't do that or it's going to upset somebody. I don't think so. I think, I'd ra- rather have all these questions asked at an open board meeting, so we know who's doing what, who's saying what. And because I'm getting too much, well, this one said this and this one said that, I'd rather alleviate all that, because I'm not saying certain things and Holly's probably not saying certain things and vice versa. It just, if we have it all on the table at an open meeting, then it's there. And nobody's questioning anything or anything. Now, you need to get the things on the roof, I did get that email. Um, I've got to go to Central Office, I'll make sure you get all that information tomorrow.
The finance office has put it together.
Yeah, and I will hand deliver that.
Should really go to all board members.
What information, what information are we talking about, Fran?
It's not, all the information about the roof.
I can, it's, um, the request was, um, any and all correspondence information on the Shasby Elementary School's recent roof project, please include our request for proposal and all bid responses that request from all vendors answering the RFP. Also, please include all appro, uh, all approval of all payments for any roof materials and services paid by your office connected to this project. So it's just that, I think that that really should be a board request and all board members should get that.
So? Yep.
So for clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Am I hearing that as a board member, something that I need to educate myself, needs to go through the whole board?
No, I think all boards, no, I think all boards should receive the same things you're asking for, that's all. You don't, you don't need their permission.
I am more than willing to share, but I need to get the information.
Mm-hmm.
I'm more than willing to bring it to the table.
If the request came through the board.
Yeah, and.
And I've, just.
Go ahead.
That was the process that I.
Okay, some of the emails are requesting of legal services and I've been made aware of that. And if we have, if somebody, if a board member is contacting the attorneys, um, then we're paying for that. That's extra stuff. So, I just want to alleviate some of that stuff. If we can do it in-house, then that's, that's what I'd rather do. And this isn't being critical of anything.
Request for legal opinion should go through the board.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have to just clarify that.
Okay.
In trying to get information, it was suggested that a legal opinion was given and I asked for that to be forwarded. I did not ask for legal service.
Well, if you.
I asked for the legal response.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, if it's, I've seen a couple of the emails and they're from, one's from Deana Atwood and I think there was a Steve Stissel, that's, we're going to get billed for that, that's all I'm saying. And I'm not being, not trying to be critical or any of that things, it's just that if we're all on the same page and I don't care how many requests you have or anything, as long as we're, everybody, we all get the same information and, and that's, that's good. I, I, I don't want to hold back anything that you feel you have to have to educate yourself, that's.
That's what's happening.
Okay.
So, just as an example then, if tomorrow I, you know, got home and said, oh, you know, I forgot to ask for something I wanted to at the meeting.
Sure. In fact, what I'm going to do at the end of this.
I don't want to wait for the next meeting, so I'm going to send an email to you, Fran.
Yeah.
And say, could you please ask the superintendent?
And you can CC all the board members. You can just CC all the board members. That's perfect.
And you can CC it to me too, but I just want everybody to know what's being disseminated to everyone.
Okay, I mean, do I need to send it to Fran or can I send it to you and copy everybody?
Send it to him.
I would say send it to me, just make sure it's copied to everybody, so everyone knows what. Because we're, so that we function as a public board.
Yeah.
Yeah. And would you respond to everybody as a whole?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like, I, I, at the end of this meeting, I'm going to ask, does anybody want to see anything on the next month's agenda? That's, if you have something, if you think of it now, or if you think of it after the fact, I usually set the, the, um, agenda the week before, so, and then we'll have it all on there and, and every, everything's fine. But, just my opinion. Anybody else?
And I, I had a request from the SBSU attorney that, you know, who is, who is authorized to contact them for information and I've told them that it should go through the chair.
So if I was looking for hypothetically, Act forty-six, legal opinion, I should send it to Fran first and then Fran look at it or send, CC the whole board.
Probably CC the whole board and so everybody's on the same page.
And then Fran just gives, okay, yeah, we'll follow up with legal.
Sure, yeah. Then that way there, it's been approved basically by the chair, there's no questions, there's, there's nothing, so.
Then we're all on the same page when I come back.
Yeah, nobody, nobody can accuse this one of doing that or whatever, it's transparency, I guess you, you could say.
So that way we're not conducting business away from the meeting, so if someone requests the information, I don't mind giving, but I think everybody should see that so that we are still functioning as a public board. And it might bring questions from everybody.
How would that go in the minutes then? I mean, that's, I mean, that's to be the Freedom of Information Act. I mean, I think, you know, I traveled a couple years ago, if I remember right, of people doing, talking behind, I mean, should we?
Well, if I send it all to you and there's no discussion on it online, then I don't think, otherwise it could be construed as a meeting, you're right.
If, if a member of the public wanted to see the information that board members have asked for, is there any reason why they wouldn't be able to see it?
Depends on the information.
Yeah, depends on what that is.
Yeah, anything with personnel or something, obviously.
Whatever it is on the roof that you're pulling together.
That's all public information, yeah.
Especially like this, this.
Most of it, I think a lot of you have already seen, you know, at, at meetings, you might not have gotten copies of it, but the RFP and.
Yeah, things like that.
Things like that, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So just for, so, so what I'm hearing, as an individual board member, I can't take action on behalf of a board, but as an individual board member, my questions have to be, there's something, you're not supposed to mass email your question or concern to a whole board, because that is a meeting, consider it a meeting. I'm hearing you say to, to, a question I may have has to go through Fran and it's going to go through this one.
I think questions you really have should be asked at the meeting as much as possible. And if there's something in between a meeting, like Dave said, then we will try to accommodate as much as we have. But if I answer that, I feel I should share that with everyone, but most of our business should be conducted here.
And I'm totally on board with, it may be nothing, it may be from, for something that there's, there's something, something just seems off on that.
Yeah, I, I think I, I don't know if I'm exactly sharing your sentiment, Holly, but I, I think I get where you're coming from. I, I would say that the board functions better when we all have the same information and the same things in front of us. So whether or not it is entirely, and I'm not, I sort of share, I'm not entirely sure that I should have to copy everybody when I ask the superintendent for something. I definitely agree that if I ask the superintendent for something, everybody should get it, uh, on board.
If it pertains to board business, I mean, sometimes I get requests from board members that it's a minor issue that doesn't, you know, a clarification is not, not that, but if it's a document, then I feel I should share that with everyone. I just, we wanted to have that discussion so that we all can get on the same page on that.
And I totally agree with that, but as five different members of a board with different ideas, different questions, different Act forty-six policy, just whatever.
From my perspective, it's forty-three board members that make these requests.
But this, this one board, and we have one business meeting held a month in public. We have a budget coming very quickly. We've had, talked over and over again about our role as a board. We've never had a second meeting to discuss these things. I don't agree, but that's my opinion.
Okay.
I think that the big thing is transparency.
Yeah, that, that way there, everybody knows what's going on and who said what, oh my gosh.
And they have more information than the others. I mean, there, there are times I feel like I'm behind eight ball in these conversations. Um, and I'm just trying to catch up here and then kind of at the end, if that hits me on the way out the door and I'm going home, I go, oh, okay, now I know what you refer to, because it's a catch-up. If I had the information beforehand, we could have a more open discussion on if someone requested a piece of information.
Well, I, I can't tell other board members how to look at the information and formulate what they would like to ask. I'm having a hard time with my questions being censored. I have no problem sharing.
They're being censored. They're being shared.
Yeah.
And I agree.
And they will know what to, after they've got the information, they will know what to ask at the board meeting, hopefully.
Well, before I share, it would be nice to get the information so that I could share it.
And all board members will receive it, that's the point.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, I, I can't do that, sorry.
Wow.
No, you're right.
Wow, I mean, you know.
All set.
Yeah, I'm all set, good, we're, we're done, thank you.
Oh, Jim, are you on your way up?
Yeah.
Can I ask, can I ask you to clarify, in the minutes, uh, there's a reference to the Act forty-six committee from last time and the, this question of whether, of whether the committee is a study committee or something else and whether or not individual boards will have.
So, at the last meeting with the consultant, Steve Sammore, uh, and, you know, whether this will be, continue to be challenged, I don't know, I'm not a legal expert. Uh, but he felt upon reviewing the minutes of how the votes were taken to form the committee, that it is a formal study committee. You know, the term wasn't used. The term exploratory committee was not also used, but it followed the process that each board voted, took two votes. First, the SU board voted to form the committee, then each individual board took two votes, one to join the committee, two to elect their representative. So Steve Sammore, the consultant, felt that it meant the criteria to be a study committee, uh, a formal study committee. Uh, as I said, doesn't mean that it might not, that ruling might, you know, be challenged.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I will just say for the record that this board, uh, I believe was under the impression that it was not a formal committee that would result in bypassing the board's approval. And for what it's worth, if the other boards felt the same way, and I suspect they all did, uh, because we were all led to believe that was the case, it seems hard to imagine that, um, that there could be an argument otherwise, a legal argument otherwise, so.
I really have no idea where this is going anymore, I don't.
I just wanted, I wanted to ask, since I've seen it in the minutes in your.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty, we're, we're, thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We will hit the action items and the treasurer's report. Dave, you had something about the treasurer's report?
I brought, um, on behalf of the treasurer, a, a report with one revision. I generally try not to look at the treasurer's report before coming, but I happened to look at it and I, I had questioned on the line of credit, it was listed as a liability. And I thought that in fact, it shouldn't be listed as a liability, it's not money we borrow, it's money that's available to borrow.
Right.
And, and then in addition, I noticed that it said June and it should have said July. So I pointed that out and was asked to bring a clean copy.
Okay. Good. Any other questions about the treasurer's report? Seeing none, any motion in a second to approve?
I make motion approve.
Okay, it's Jeff.
The amended one.
The amended, yes, sorry.
A second now.
I need a second. Oh, Holly, okay. All in favor of the treasurer's report? Uh, unanimous. Okay. Next, the consideration of petition to modify VHI bylaws. Everybody's had that in their packet. Questions, comments?
How did we get, how did you get this, Fran, did it come through Central Office?
Just, yeah, it's in the packet, yeah, through Central Office.
I did have a chance to read through it and I, I found myself, I was sort of surprised to be, uh, finding myself disagreeing with it. Um, I'm not a fan of VHI.
Nor am I.
But noting that the five, the board makeup currently has five members and three of them are, are intended to be school district employees. and only two of them representatives of the teachers association. It seems like there already is, you know, inherent advantage to having the, it built into the way the board is structured right now, looking at three to two. And the proposal is to have a VSBA member, not, not all schools belong to the VSBA, for whatever that's worth. So I'm not entirely comfortable with it.
I took it as, when I, I read through it, and I took it as a knee-jerk reaction from this board, saying that they didn't like something that happened, so they want to change the board. So that to me doesn't, doesn't really look like the right thing, way, way to go. So I'm not too comfortable with it either.
Holly?
Well, I, 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 I said on the negotiation committee, so lots of discussions, and I have to, geez, I, I have to say I agree with this. I'm not trying to, you know, I, I just, because I am informed by what it does, that's my opinion.
You're up, Jeff. I have no opinion on it. Oh, I'm not for it, so. So we don't have to have a vote. Well, I guess we have to if.
Maybe you should table it till we find out more information.
All right, you can do that.
Or they find out their questions.
I'd just as soon do that instead of take, take a vote on it. So is everybody okay with tabling this? Find out more information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe Jeff, you can come back with the.
Richard, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So that is tabled.
Should, should you have a motion to table?
I'll have one. Ed, you made it.
Yep.
Good man.
I'll second it.
Jeff seconded it. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
We'll put this on next month then.
Yep. Okay. Next, budget transfer request. Request of administration of following budget transfer requires approval of the Shastberg School Board to cover the cost of MSK. Design work, we kind of already did that, I think. That's for the work for the CO2 stuff?
Some of it, some of it is the CO2 ventilation project, some of it is still roof, some related proof.
Okay.
We needed a permit for the roof, so we got that.
Okay, so we'll have to do it.
So it's an associated cost, we have those two separate projects. And I didn't want to take out Jay's general fund because he loses that money for.
Transfer seventeen seventy-nine fifty from the capital improvements reserve fund to account number, I won't read the whole thing. Capital improvements building to cover these costs. I need a motion to do that.
So move.
Okay, it's Dave. Ed seconded it. Any questions?
I just have to say, this just goes along with the roofing packet.
I got you. I'll make sure you have that tomorrow. I will deliver it to your home. All in favor of this motion? Okay, four and one. Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda, we have June eighth and July eleventh minutes. I realize we have more minutes coming, but only the eighth and eleventh are on here.
No, you've got the eighth, fourteenth, thirtieth, and eleventh.
There's a whole packet of minutes here.
Yeah.
Eighth, fourteenth, thirtieth.
Okay, well, the only one I'm getting is, it says on the consent agenda, June eighth and July eleventh. There's nothing else on that consent.
Mine, mine says the whole thing.
Yeah, mine just too.
All right, well, I don't have that. Okay.
I'll give you mine.
And, and a note on that, I think in your packets, the July eleventh meeting, you actually got the SVS, that was the carousel meeting?
Yes.
You actually got the SVSU meeting minutes.
See, I don't have them all on here.
The minutes for Shastberg are correct and they're posted to the website.
All right. Any questions on any of the minutes? It's not anything.
I, I think we should remove the July eleventh minutes from the motion, because I haven't seen them and.
Okay.
They weren't, since they weren't mailed to us, I didn't realize.
Anything, anybody else?
I move acceptance without, till July eleventh.
July eleventh, so we have to, all right, with the removal of that. All in favor?
Table the eleventh.
All right, yes. All in favor of that motion for the minutes only?
Do I have a second?
Oh, I thought I had a second. Ed, second. Okay.
For just the minutes, you're saying?
Just the minutes. Yeah, we'll do the warrants next. We're pulling the eleven.
Since there's a thousand there for the minutes, I do abstain from that one. I think Dave's in the same boat. He wasn't there for two of these.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That's true.
I mean, should we do them as each one individually?
Yeah. Board's pleasure. We'll do them individually. All right.
I withdraw my motion.
So I make motion to do the June eighth minutes?
Okay.
I'll second.
I, Ed seconded it. Okay, all in favor of those minutes? Okay, you got, all right. Just Dave.
You abstained, yeah.
And I'll do June fourteenth minutes.
Make the motion. Next one.
Oh, I thought you just did them all.
No, we're just doing them separately.
Dave, Dave was there a couple of, so he can't.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second on the fourteenth minutes?
Yep.
Okay. All right, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, all right, who, who made the motion again?
I'm just.
Okay, good. All right, all in favor of that motion? Okay. Abstention, either or?
Oh, me. I'm abstaining. We have some things we are discussing after the fact.
Next minutes would be the June thirty. Need a motion in a second?
I move to accept the June thirtieth minutes.
Ed seconded it. Okay. Any concerns, questions? Seeing none? All in favor of those minutes? Oh, go ahead.
I'm just, Dave brought up something.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering, this was on the bench. And it concerns all our questions, so I just wanted to, it concerns questions about the legal and, but we've done it, but I don't know that it's right. So move up, go ahead.
Okay. All in favor of the June thirty minutes? Okay.
Abstain.
No.
One no, one abstention. Okay, well, go to the warrants. Anything on the warrants?
I'm just, it has part of what I have not got.
Okay, so you're, you're referring to the roof?
Yep.
Okay.
And also, also, I would just like to, we have the line that's back there again. And we've talked over and over about the signature of who's taking, and it's, the lines there again.
Do you have a new director?
Yeah, that's Renee Gordon.
If we just ask her to sign.
Very good. Yep, she's, she's very good.
Okay. I do over tomorrow. Okay, anything else on warrants? All in favor of those warrants?
We have a motion.
I thought we had a motion.
No.
Ed, you make the motion. Holly seconded it. Okay. All in favor of the warrants? Okay. One abstention or no? One no. Okay. All right. Policies?
Policies.
That's you.
Yeah. Policies, you want to do one, we'll do them all together or individual?
I, well, ones for, we'll do the next two altogether. The first one's for warning.
Of course, yeah, I have a question on this first one.
Yep.
I've read through this and the way I read it is, there's no policy really set there. Just that the superintendent has the authority to set it. And that's the way I read the whole thing. And there's really no guidelines to what the optimum class size is, other than he's got the choice.
True.
And that's, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not reading it right, but that's the way I read it.
Well, I, I see on the front page where they crossed out, it had twenty students per teacher and then grades after that, it's fewer than twenty-five per teacher. I mean, I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know.
Fran?
Yes.
And, and Jeff has, I've asked this before, in defense of Jeff, he said, stated to us, he follows the school quality standards, twenty and twenty-five. That's the school quality standards. Sorry, Mr. Malloy.
Which is that?
Which, which is, and we as a board, that could be our policy or our, your part, but then I will follow, because Jeff does, you've stated you do do that. Twenty and, I mean, I know it could be seventeen or, because the kids come in.
Since I've been here, we've been fortunate enough to keep it below twenty, K three and below twenty-five.
And you've stated that before, that you, you follow the, and the school quality standards.
Well, this, on the back page, it references the Vermont education quality standards, so, and it gives the, the numbers.
Right, but nowhere it gives what the standards are.
It's, these are, the twenty and twenty-five is the standard, that, that they've crossed all out. You're right.
Why did they, why did they do that?
They've crossed it all out.
Because he's absolutely right. They're not, that's not going to be the policy. It's going to be.
Your recommendation.
Well, yes, but, but I think that we can agree that Jeff has followed the recommendation. That's his, that's how he.
Yeah, I, I think that if I remember other conversations regarding tightening of the policies, the, the purpose of this, of deleting all of that language is that they want the policy to say, we follow the, the state standards, whatever they are. And when this was written, the standards were K three, would be fewer than twenty, and so that's included in here. If those standards change, they don't want to have, have the policy go back to the six boards again and go through a process.
I see.
I don't believe they changed.
I don't think they did either, but I think they're anticipating and looking at all the policies and saying, we're still, the policy still says we follow the standards. We just don't have the numbers now, which.
That could change at any point.
Yeah, so I would, you know, I think we would want to think about, what do we do when those standards change? How do we, how are we notified and are we still comfortable with it? And do we really want to follow those standards or do we want to have our own?
That's what we can do.
Yeah.
Right. But to me, it, it's, you have a policy that doesn't say anything, other than you're following the state.
We got a lot of them that don't say much.
I know that. You know, if you're reading the policy and it's, it doesn't tell you anything, the policy is not very accurate.
Well, I think what's, you know, the first page I'm most okay with, because it, you know.
Right.
States, you know, national protection, my education quality, which, you know, I'm okay, because, you know, they know what the standards are. It's the second page where, you know, the principals and superintendents show on line sixty, the principal and superintendent sell established appropriate class size numbers. I mean, I think part of it in, due to the flexible pathways, could now get to accommodate kids who are choosing their own flexible pathways towards graduation. You can have a kid who wants to be a dance major, who wants to go to school for dance, you have to accommodate that child. And that's where I think, you know, and I've always, you know, kind of said this in my head, you know, with this flexible pathways is to open up a whole can of worms, because there aren't teachers who can teach those. So how do you adapt a kid who wants to go to dance school to be a professional dancer and there's nothing offered in high school? Do you tuition them out for everything? You know, I mean, I think that's a problem we're going to run into is, as people start picking their own pathways, we have to have new programs. And, and that's kind of what the superintendent's saying, you know, says there is, the principal and superintendent will have a class of one kid, of one teacher, if it's.
I'm not sure, so sure that's entirely true of that, that we're going to be forced to have classes of one kid.
Well, I'm just saying that maybe, yeah. For successful operation, financial considerations, but I mean, how do you, how do you do that for these outlier kids who, there's nothing there for them, who want to have this opportunity? And I think that's the problem we're going to run into with the class size for the high school.
I know at the high schools, they don't have more than ten.
So you have.
I got work to do.
But no, you have, this is just to be warned, so it keeps moving, but.
Yeah, so I just, we can have a good conversation next year.
Do we have a member on the committee?
I'm on the policy.
Yeah, so we could ask Ed, we don't have to warn it. We could ask Ed to go back with the board's concerns.
Right, go back with the questions.
Now, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, the next policy meeting is September twelfth at four thirty at central office.
Yep.
Just so, so anybody that would like to go, other than the, the committee members, you can so do that. So if they, you know, go from there. But anyway, so, all right, so I got a, do I have a motion for warning?
Need somebody.
I'll, I'll warn it. I'll, I'll move it. I need a second.
I'll second.
Just second it. All in favor of the optimum class size policy number sixty-four hundred?
For approval.
I like it.
It fails. Okay, it goes back to the.
Everybody else was against.
Yeah, well, they didn't raise their hand, I would assume.
It has to, it goes back and.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll go back.
Why don't you say opposed?
Oh, well, yeah.
You can't assume, because one may abstain.
That's true. All right, who opposes? Okay, good. All three. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Now, the other two.
Yep. Those are for adoption.
Visits to school and fundraising, you know, and went through the policy committee and I have no problem with it.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I just, go ahead, Dave.
Well, I was going to ask if we could vote on them separately, because I don't want to vote for one of them.
Sure. All right, so we'll take, policy number ten twenty, visits to school.
He, he moved to the different ones, so.
Which one are we doing first? Well, we're going to take it separately, so I'm doing the next one down, visits to school.
So you're making a motion?
I, I need a motion. I'll, I'll make the motion. Okay, second, Ed. Okay. All right, questions on visits to school? Hearing nothing? All in favor of the policy ten twenty? Okay, for Holly abstain or no? No, okay. Next policy number fifty-two hundred, fundraising, that's for adoption also. Questions, concerns?
My concern is, well.
Better, better make a motion first.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Ed, Jeff, okay?
Yeah, I just, I fundamentally disagree with the language, the, what seems to be the intent of this policy. This, this is an existing policy and I know it was only tweaked. It's not, it's not really new, idea-wise, but I, I think we've, you know, we've had some conversations, not, not recently, but over the past year about the way fundraising is handled at the school and we've, we've actually included money in the budget to make it less necessary to have fundraising. I, I've experienced myself. I, I've heard from other parents who feel that there's, there's an emphasis in classroom time, in educational time, spent on fundraising, to the extent that I, I feel like we should not be promoting it in a policy. If we have a policy on fundraising, I think it should be limiting rather, rather strictly how we expect fundraising to be handled within the school. With the, with the understanding that if we need funds, you know, the board should be aware of that and if we're not budgeting them and we think there's a need for fundraising, okay, but not just wide open. So I, I particularly object to, you know, the language here, the boards are aware of the educational and social value. I, I just, I think that's outdated. I think the fundraising we do today is, is, very little of it is actually providing the educational focus. And maybe you feel differently, Jeff, and.
Some yes, some no.
If you want to speak to that, I'd certainly be open to hearing, you know, another opinion. I'm changing my mind, but the competition that goes on within a classroom for students to, you know, be the best, I think is not healthy always. And the words that are given out, I think are counterproductive, rather than the language that's used here. Anyway, I, I will not be voting in favor of it. I don't, I don't come with, with alternative language, which would probably be more helpful and constructive if I were to take it back, but.
Really?
I don't want people, I don't want people to think that, oh, just go to the board and then the board will give us some money either. I don't want that, that mentality, because not all the times will we fund a program. And maybe we will, but I'm just saying, there may be a, a time that, well, PTO or somebody comes, oh, we want five thousand dollars. Well, no, we're not going to spend the five thousand dollars. So I remember years ago, we used to do the overnight trips and all that stuff. And it got to the point of where the fifth grade or sixth grade, whichever one at the time, every year they tried to do, outdo themselves. It got to where the money. It got to where the money got to like ten thousand dollars, and it got ridiculous, because they were, as to what you said, Dave, they were. It was a competition and it was, I don't think it was healthy, because I think these kids weren't getting any sleep. They were out. Fundraising, trying to get money around town, so. But anyway, I I just make that comment, so it doesn't mean that they're going to get the money if they come through for the board, so.
Yeah, I I I think, I agree with what Dave says, and I think the problem is, is that maybe it should be toned down class-wise. In the school itself, rather than emphasizing it.
Oh, yeah, no, I I agree.
I think that could be done at a at a at a class level or a school level.
Yeah.
Rather than, rather than, you know, all the all the classes.
Yeah.
You know, for me, now as a parent, you know, there are some of these fundraisers that come home with my my child, and I don't agree with. Because of social reasons, or I don't agree with them wholeheartedly, you know, but. I'm more than happy if there's an alternative, you know, more than happy to make the donation, which is, I don't like to participate in some of them, because it's. It's not what I want my child.
For whatever reason, yeah, that's fine.
She doesn't even learn direct marketing, but, you know, I respect that they need the money for stuff, and even a simple clause saying, you know. I wanted not get any fundraising material at home, and here's my donation to the school for all fundraisers that may occur this year. I'm more than happy with that, but some of them I just, I don't agree with.
Would it be too extreme to have a a policy that said, if you want to have a fundraiser, you need to get board approval? We we require board approval for field trips, for example.
Only field trips that go a certain distance, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Over a hundred miles?
Yeah, fifty miles.
Thirty or something like that, but.
It could be.
So maybe it's farther. Would that be would that be too ridiculous, a suggestion?
I think it could be challenging, just because you only meet once a month. And sometimes fundraising opportunities come up. I mean, I I'll speak as the acting PTO president. A lot of fundraisers, PTO raises the most money in the school, besides the sixth grade, but you guys remedied the sixth grade this year by putting a lot of money in the budget for nature's classroom and Malpilier trip, so they're not going to do as much fundraising. But PTO does a majority of the fundraising here at Shasberry. And besides the fall fundraiser, which I think is called Meadow Farms, where they sell some items.
Yeah.
Much of their fundraising is events they hold here at school. Big Truck Night is a big one, um mother-daughter, her mother-son event, well, actually, I didn't do very well this year. What's that?
The dances.
The dances, I mean, the PTO does a lot of events. They have events for our students and our families to raise money. It's not like we're sending constant things home to sell. And same thing with the after-school program. You funded the after-school program this year. They had one fundraiser they did a year, uh mixed bags, which is very popular, but. Um that's one fundraiser they don't necessarily have to do this year, because you guys chose to fund that through the local budget. Um we don't do a lot of marketing selling. We really don't. A lot of the stuff we try to do is, let's provide a service or an activity for our families. And make some money that we can put back into the school later on for other events.
You know, I guess, no one's going to object to Big Truck Night, I hope. I mean, that's this institution.
They're digging up the lawn. I don't want them here anymore.
Okay. Get off my lawn.
That will get out.
But um but when it when it when it's a fundraiser that involves. Talking about it in class time and encouraging kids during class time to go out, and then recognizing who won the most during an all-school gathering, I'll join in. That's where I would question, you know, should we really be focusing on that during during school time? And how and how much are we focusing on it? So and you know, I had, my kids go through here and I got the, I got the notices and I got the reminders and I. Got, you know, the all the information as a parent, so and I was privy to it at the time, anyway.
Hang on. Go ahead, no, I'll I'll get here afterwards, which I shouldn't be doing, but I I will.
We had the discussion about my questions, and I guess this is a good time to share, to see what it is I'm. We have fundraising, we have PTO that does a great job for the kids of the school. There's many events, money to be raised. But as a board. We had a management letter from the audit firm. Now, these are the.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm supposed to copy these off and say, here, here, this is, I have this question.
No, bring it at the, talk about the next meeting.
We have. But, yes.
Well, go ahead.
We had a management, and and fundraising was on the thing. I'm not opposed to, we should be aware, I agree. Um but we've, I asked a question. We've had fundraising for a year. Management. State.
Yeah.
We should be, the words were, we should be, um right here, in the policy, which I don't know how we feel about them. Must be carefully monitored and controlled. In the auditor's recommendation, in that. We should be carefully monitoring. I asked to have, I work with numbers. Each of us are individ- different individuals. I asked for the profit and loss statements, so that if there was a problem, I would, my intention wasn't to say, oh, there's a problem. Jeff, this is what we're doing, or this is, you know, you should be careful of this, or this is great. Those are my questions.
Well, I I.
The manag- I don't know if you were even aware. It was, it was out for public. We have a fundraiser.
I think they have that management letter in there in almost every audit, because they know schools do fundraising.
This is board management letter, board, not not the big audit.
Yeah.
Board, that's public, on the website, take a look. That's why I'm questioning my, what I asked the board, or what I, when I ask a question, because of the.
Is that on the SVSU website, that letter?
SVSU, it's it's open, you know, it's for all boards. So when I have a question, I'm supposed to copy this off and or file it?
I think something like that, you could ask the principal. I would assume that our principal will be taking care of that. I don't think the board has that kind of time to check all other than what we're going to get when we do budget time. And I can't remember how many times the, well, we would try to take care of the PTO's money. I think that.
That goes to our activity count, which the auditors check during the audit.
Which assesses, and I have no, but but it says boards are supposed to carefully, and. That's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I I think we do. I I I don't think there's been a problem in the past, but.
No, and I and I'm not suggesting there is.
Okay.
But it's for Jeff's protection.
Yep. Okay. Anything out? Are we going to, uh, there is a motion in a second.
We got a motion in a second.
Yeah, okay. Uh, hearing nothing else, uh, all in favor of policy fifty-two hundred, which is fundraising? Okay, three and abstention or no?
Opposed.
No, okay, and Holly no, okay.
Yeah, I.
Holly voted for it.
Okay.
Holly voted for it.
Oh, she did.
I did, I.
You did.
I just said my concerns to the board, I.
So it's four and one, all right, very good. Okay.
Personnel?
Next is personnel, and it's the crossing guard salary.
So the last board, I think it was the last board meeting, um you all decided you wanted to pursue hiring a crossing guard to do the morning and afternoon shifts, roughly an hour and a half a day, I believe it was. I asked, uh, central office to post it in the banner, rather than the school spring. I think more people looking at that position would be looking at the banner. Uh, as of last Thursday, I think there had been no applicants, but we, if we are going to hire that position, I think we need to decide how we're going to pay. One, where it's going to come from, because it was something in the budget. Two, are you going to pay, does this board want to pay a stipend? Do they want to pay an hourly rate? How do they want to do that? So if I do get an applicant, I can give them a kind of inkling of what the rate will be or the stipend will be um at that point. So that's a board decision to decide that.
Board's pleasure.
I.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I don't mean to sound budgets, as I carp on every, we have not talked about. But a few years back, I don't know, Fran, you might have been on the budget, and I don't know how many years Dave has been on. But a few years years back, there was minutes from the board. To save the district money, they utilized thinking out of the box and putting it into. The um with the custodials.
Yeah.
And we, as I said, we have not discussed the budget. We need the kids to be safe. But is this the best way to go about doing it with things that may be coming down the road with the air, with the different?
There's discussions that um wanted Jay in the school more, so I think that's why we went that way.
And the night custodian also, because you cut his hours.
Yes, and um I have checked with other um uh schools. And they have. A citizen, regular citizen, um crossing kids. I know North Bennington does. And so I don't think it's anybody that there was something said you had to have a master's degree or or something like that. I'm sure we want to check these people to make sure they're not felons or anything else. I could get that or background check. But a lot of those people have been crossing kids for years, just like, you know, we had Vanessa here for thirty, I don't know, thirty-some years. And I don't think it has to be, uh, it's somebody that's going to have, that wants the time and and likes kids. So I'm open for suggestions, but we don't have any applicants as of right now.
As of Thursday, I haven't had a chance to call, because it was last Thursday, we hadn't had any applications.
Okay, so you'll check on that.
Yep.
And what did you find other schools do? About three thousand dollars for the year?
Some of these people, some people have, I didn't ask about money, I just asked who do they have?
I looked in the budget.
But I I I can, I'm going to put that on my list. I'll check tomorrow, too, because I can ask a few people over there. But the point is, uh, you know, some people say, well, we want to know what they have for an education or something. I think that's that's not what we we want to do.
They need to be trained for the liability because of the safety of children.
I mean, there's not a whole lot of training involved, but you want somebody that's got some common sense and competent, number one. But whatever the training is, and I don't know what they go through as far as in training. Yeah, to be able to cross kids and not run them out in front of a car. I mean, that's, anyway.
You remember, we had a a an accident. We had a person hit. You don't, you.
Who got hit? That was.
Yeah. I agree. I think we can, I think we can get some training for the for the individual, but my concern is that if I do get an applicant that I want to interview, they're going to ask how much am I going to get paid?
Hundred dollars an hour.
And you.
You want to do, that's the board, that's your choice.
And you're saying you didn't, you don't know numbers. You checked, but you don't know numbers. They do have, we know we have people.
I would consider ten dollars an hour, fair parry.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, we do have some history, because we had somebody in the position, as you said, for a number of years until.
Oh, yeah.
Three-ish years ago, I think. So if we, you know, felt we needed some guidance, we're going to start with that, but.
Yeah.
And I guess if we, if there are other districts that that can give us information, that'd be helpful, too, but.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, ten sounds like it would be reasonable.
I'm fine with ten, Jeff.
So that's fifteen hours a week. How many weeks of the school year?
Well, hundred and eighty days a year.
Hundred and eighty days.
It's fifteen hours.
An hour and a half a day, three hours. That's what you did it for.
Not fifteen hours a week, though.
Which is five days in a week.
Yes, a five.
Three hours a day.
Three hours a day, three hours a day, hour.
No, it's hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Oh, total.
Forty-five minutes, forty, forty-five minutes in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Seven and a half.
Yeah, seven and a half.
So we're talking about four thousand dollars, maybe?
We were paying a lot more than that before, so.
See, that's why we.
You have it plugged into the 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 uh maintenance.
If if.
Yeah.
The safety of the children is important. If we feel that this is the best that we can do, but.
I mean, I know what the other people pay. They pay ten dollars.
I I'll find that out tomorrow.
Some might even have a stipend.
I think it's, I think it's stipends that they.
They just say it's a flat three thousand for the year you worked hundred and eighty days.
That's that's what, in the budgets, that's kind of how it was looking. Not ours.
Oh.
I took another, because we didn't have it, because it was. Done by, you know, it was um put into other, put into other positions. Taken away from to take, you know, to save money, but. I'm done.
Okay, so we're, do we need a motion on? Yeah, we probably need a motion.
I need a motion, just so I can.
I'll make the motion at ten dollars an hour for a crossing guard. I need a second.
A second.
Jeff, second. All in favor of that motion? Yeah, unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hopefully I'll have my candidate for you.
Yeah. And next regular meeting is September fourteenth.
I got a couple of things.
And, oh, I forgot all about you. Jeff, I'm sorry.
It'll be short, I promise, because I already did the parking lot update. Um, as we discussed, the roof has been completed. It's been signed off on by MSK, you know. It's clear sheet all the way across the top, nice and neat now. Um, the parking lot I gave you an update on. August is our in-service days, like Jim said, the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth, uh, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth are building days here at Shasberry. Uh, the twenty-fourth will be the teachers and the professional staff, and we'll have Ruben Pentador, the creator of the Sammer Model, coming in to talk with um both the Shasberry staff and some, I think some high school staff as well. And if you recall, the Sammer Model is learning how to integrate technology into the into lessons in the classroom and uh. Really engaging students in learning in different ways using technology. Um, he's, although I'm not in that realm, he's, I guess he's pretty famous in the technology world. And we're pretty honored to have him working with our district. He works all over the world. He um he literally works all over the world on this. And then the second day on the twenty-sixth, the whole staff will be together. We'll be continuing to enhance and add on to our MTS model, which is the multi-tiered system of support. We've been doing academic the last two years previously, and we're still going to fine tune that a little bit, but Ross will be adding behavior to the MTS model and social emotional learning to that model. Um, again, having tiers of support around both those areas for students that, you know, they'll get general instruction in those areas as a whole. And then they'll have a tier-two support if they need it, and a tier-three support if they need it, if that first instruction doesn't work well. And so that'll be much of the day on the twenty-sixth. Kids come back on the twenty-ninth. Looking forward to seeing them. We had the kindergartners out there earlier, when you came in, if you came in before six-thirty, they had their meet and greet this afternoon. Uh, so I met a few more of them, and uh we've had, I think, I think we've had three kindergartners added to the list, two or three kindergartners added to the list since the summer started.
So what does that bring us to?
Kindergartners?
Yeah.
We're getting high, we're getting close to that that calling number. I think we're at eighteen and seventeen.
Thirty-five for the class.
Yeah, I think. I don't quote me on that, Dave. I haven't looked at the new list, um, but I think that's what we're looking at, yeah.
What do we do if we get two more?
Come to you and. We get two more, we can do it. Nineteen and nineteen, we can do that. If we get up to that.
Okay, yeah.
Try to keep it below twenty. When it gets, when it gets to twenty is when I come to you and decide, you know, we, I, what the policy actually says is Jim and I would get together and say, okay, is adding twenty-one to this class going to be education benefit? Is it going to impact the class? If it's yes, we come to you and say, we need to maybe add another kindergarten class. If no, we'll come to you and say, no, I think it's it's okay, we'll be fine. So that discussion's had at that point.
Have we added students in other other grade levels this summer?
Yes, we have, actually. Yeah, um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I want to say five or six students we've added um this summer.
Families moving into the district.
Families moving into the district. We've had one, which I think will come next board meeting. We have North Bennington, just one parent that's petitioning to come here. Um, but we'll work through that paperwork now with North Bennington and Central Office to get that in place, and then a number of families have just moved into the into the area.
Holly?
I I'm just wondering, um, the security, do you have any update on that? Because the last time we said you were going to.
Jay has been trying and trying. Well, I guess the last time we talked was, we were looking at those lobby doors. That's something you you all um were interested in. Jay's been contacting, trying to contact the, I think it was. I don't think it's the old way. I can't remember the contractor now, to get an idea what that might cost. He hasn't had any luck getting, you know, them and getting what the doors would cost. Um, as soon as I get that, I will bring that to you. Um, as far as the fobs and everything else, I need a board direction as far as what you guys want us to do. Do you want me to go ahead and get bids for the fobs and or any other security measures you want to take? Um, I can do that, or if you want to have a board discussion about it and there, but there's been no real direction given, I don't think, about as far as.
Well, that was in in our, um, June fourteen minutes, the proposal will require, so I thought that we already did that.
My recognition is a discussion.
Well, we didn't say one way, the other, and we we had, we did discuss it. I do remember discussing it, but we didn't really.
The one thing I remember.
Okay, and RFP is the, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's the other thing I was gonna?
I'll double check with Jay again tomorrow.
Oh, um, I saw, um, computers. Do we have two twenty-five computers come in?
Uh, hopefully soon. We.
Are they from the?
For the computer lab.
Yeah, I I remember.
Yep, we got, um, actually, we got a beneficial quote under the twenty-five thousand, I think, that we budgeted for. Um, and Central Office is working through the lease agreement now with the company, because we completely plan on leasing them, and I think we're actually going to be able to do a two-year lease and pay them off, rather than a three-year lease. So um it'll save us a little bit on interest.
Yeah.
We're paying for them? They don't come under the grant, the big grant that. We're paid for them, they don't come under the grant, the big grant that was?
We didn't, I didn't ask for the money for the, from the KIB money, I asked you guys.
Oh, no, 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 the SVSU Y grant, like Fran, I'll tell Alex after.
Okay, Ed?
I'm, the letter from the Huzak River Hydro.
Yes.
They said that the council, the council said no, so they didn't have it. I would like to see the reasons why.
Can I ask you before the meeting the same question?
Yeah, and I'd like to find out how it is that our legal counsel can override a vote of the board. And the vote may have been ill-considered, and to Ed's point, tell us why, so that we don't do that again next time. But legally, really, we can back out of it after having voted? I'm, I'm, I'm just curious to know how that works.
I, I'm, to my understanding, I don't have the letter with me, because I can't.
I'll go here first.
Well, do you? My understanding, it was, um, the, the people in Powell, I don't know if it was a tannery or something that's not going to participate, Powell Tannery. And that's why they're not, that's why it's Nolan Lloyd now.
Well, it says, and I'm, I'm reading a letter with Huzak River Hydro in the letterhead, is that what you've got in front of you?
Yeah, Huzak River Hydro, yeah.
As it turns out, the SVSU council was unwilling to proceed with the offer that was presented to the boards, SE boards. Instead, they instead proposed their own plan, I don't know who "they" is.
Okay.
Which would be highly impractical and enormously costly. We would have enjoyed partnering with the schools in this unprecedented deal, but alas, that will not come to fruition. So, um, yeah, I sort of feel like somebody's.
I will find that out, and it'll be on the, uh, next agenda.
But also, just to the larger question, Fran, of, we voted on this.
Right.
The board agreed to do it.
Yeah.
And even if our lawyer says you shouldn't have done that.
Yep.
They should have come back to us.
Yeah. Doesn't that seem a little odd?
Yeah.
Yeah, before they, before they turned it down, they should have come back to us before they turned.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Saying this has come up.
Then I have a, I have another question, or are you, you have another?
No, I'm done.
Fran, I'm wondering if you could ask the Central Office to provide us for next month, the full fiscal year that just ended in June?
Yeah.
In revenue and expenses.
Okay.
The, uh, the budget status report, thank you. It's, um, it would be nice to have that provided to us without having to ask. It's an important document so that we know how we end of the year.
Sure. Okay, got it. Anybody else? Just so you'll know, for the next meeting, we'll do the consideration of the petition to modify the bylaws, I'll check on that. I'll check, check on the audit, the management letter in the audit about fundraising.
And you have to redo those July minutes.
Yeah, July, thank you, that's the other part.
Fran, if, if, I think the bid process for the parking lot has to be twenty days, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So once I know something like that, I'll, I'll email you all, once I know the dates and all that for that. So you guys know, and we may be able to meet before September, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe twenty days between now and then.
We can do that.
Do our bids take twenty days, is that the process?
They're allowed twenty days to get, depending on how many people are gonna bid, so you have to give.
But it's a twenty-day process?
Right, right.
I think the large purchases, large projects, I think.
Yeah.
That's why.
Over fifteen, yeah.
Like parking lot.
And I'll check on the crossing guard pages, so we'll, we'll know exactly that, probably before that. Anybody need anything else on the next agenda?
I'll probably have some more Act forty-six stuff.
Okay. I'll put Act forty-six question mark.
Keep it posted.
Okay.
One last thing.
Yep, go ahead.
I ask and ask every month, but, but any board members find any value in having a second meeting? We've talked about it for seven months now.
I, I'm sure when we, once we get into this year's budget, there'll be a second meeting.
It may alleviate some questions, it may, may let the, the community have more input because that would be more of what the meeting was. This meeting is supposed to be a bu, business meeting held in public.
That second meeting will be just budget, there won't be anything else, so we'll talk about the budget, and only the budget. But, anyway, we'll get there. Anybody got anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All right, Ed and Jeff, all in favor? Aye, thank you.